Alright guys, we're gonna bring the meeting to order. So, we need to, where's our minutes, review our minutes from our May 15 meeting. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting, which was May 15.
Okay, any discussion, was there any changes or anything on that Lisa?
I don't think so. A couple of things from Carrie, but I fixed them.
Okay, good. Anything else Larry?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor of the minute, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Who seconded it? It was Zach and then who Larry?
Larry. Okay, so, um, we have, any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
I think Mike wanted to see if he can move CD and work stuff up front.
Yeah, just with the merger and movement locally.
Are you good with that Larry? Are you good with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, anything else?
The other thing was, I think it was discussed about Highway Road's side mowing was busy, it should be open tonight, and that's not on the agenda.
Okay, I don't think we had any, is that correct Harold? Okay. So we'll discuss that more. Cannabis retail in Groton. So, you're on the agenda, but I just want a few rules to start with, that this is not an informational meeting, it's a select board meeting, so. And you've requested to be here, or on the agenda, so, that being said, go ahead.
My name is Dallas. Hi, and we're here to introduce ourselves and just say hello, and maybe just give you a little bit background about who we are. We are cultivators legalized, we just say Vermont, we are licensed cultivators and manufacturers, and we live right up the road, at the top of Powder Spring, right down the Groton line, we're at Clark Pass Road, Lucia Hill, and we've been there for about 16 years, 15, 16 years. And we previously, our background is agriculture, growing organic seeds, fruit and vegetable seeds.
Sure, yeah, so we-
This is John.
Yeah, my name is John Harkins, and so, yeah, we moved up there in about 2009, and I went to my family's place, and I've been working in different agricultural endeavors for about 10 years before that, and when we moved up there, we had the whole vision of creating a retreat center, and creating a place to bring people up and enjoy the serenity and peacefulness of the hilltop there, and then pursuing our organic agricultural stuff, and so we were kind of taking a little bit of a different approach, as opposed to just selling fruit and veggies, although we did do that in the beginning, and we used to come down here to the farmer's market when that was happening, maybe about 10 years ago, and have little stands, and then all of a sudden, something that I had worked on previously was organic seed production, so we thought since we were so remote, that instead of, you know, doing the hustle to farmers markets, because we're so far away from everything, that we would grow seeds and sell that to northeastern seed companies, and then so we had contracts with some different seed companies, like Fedco and High Mowing here in Vermont, fruition seeds over in New York, and then we started our own little retail seed business. And I've been doing that for, I guess we did that for maybe eight years or so, and then when the whole legalized adult use of cannabis happened, that's when we started to kind of move over, because we really weren't able to make a sustainable business on just the seed and the vegetable and fruit farm. So we started doing that in 2022, and adult use cannabis was legalized, and we got licensed for our background checks, our facility all sorted out, and we're related to the sun grown, sun grown and outdoor, we don't have an indoor facility, it's not like a warehouse or anything really out in fields, and then greenhouses. And then, kind of understanding as the markets developed, we wanted a way, we can't, we can't sell retail, like someone can't come to our farm and buy cannabis, we have to sell to one of the 70 or 80 retailers who are existing in the state already. So, you know, it's a little bit of a, you know, hard go, you know, selling retail and not being able to connect with our customers, and you know, at the whims of these different retail shops, so started thinking about ways that we could open our own retail business, and we did, we were looking at the alleys market property down in Rygate, and it had a lot of problems, it was not ideal, but we did go ahead and try and get the vote down in Rygate, and they ultimately voted no, but I don't-
It was out of town, maybe.
It was out of town, maybe, and then-
So, so I understand, but this kind of sounds more like an informational meeting. So what are you here asking for from the board?
Uh, we're not asking for anything. We just wanted to just be here-
To say hi.
Right.
And we are, we have informational flyers.
Which we've seen your flyers, and you, you do informational things at the store, and you, you could have arranged an informational meeting with the board and with the town, or you could rent the Gendasian and do an informational meeting to people too. So generally, this, it's a board meeting, so I just want to make sure.
Sure, yeah, so we're just, you know, introducing ourselves, just here to meet all of you guys, and hear how the town government operates, and totally hear your point, that's not our, you know, we don't feel-
We don't have any point, you know, like, we're not, good, bad, or different, we're not here to anything, we have no-
Yeah, yeah, and so as far as the town, you know, I don't even know what kind of information, all of this is publicly available information, you can go onto the CCP website, this is a licensed regulated, you know, legal thing going on in Vermont, so if there's any questions, I would just, you know, refer anyone to the state body that regulates this sort of thing, and we're, you know, lawful individuals, and we follow all the rules, and, you know, that's kind of it.
So, if it's alright, I'll just, I know that there may be some questions, so just to kind of make sure everyone's aware, I mean, there is a warned meeting that's on June 18th, and voting is in the town clerk's office from 10 a.m. to 7 p.m., and that's how it's being, that's how the select board has decided to move forward with the vote on this, per state regulations.
And just like quick little thing, so the town has to opt in to allow retailers in their town, so any other kind of business, a manufacturer, or cultivator, or wholesaler, doesn't need to come to the, to the town voters and ask permission to operate in the town, a retailer does, and so that's what kind of started this whole thing, and it's just up to the town voters to decide, you know, yes or no, do you want it or don't you?
Right, absolutely, so, so- Questions? So I think Deb, juror setter, hand up first.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I do, I have a question for the select board. Have you discussed with these guys a sales tax that would be specific to Groton that could be directed towards an uptick in covering related health emergencies that might happen, and the Groton State Forest or in the area with the accessibility of cannabis? That seems like a risk to the town, or, you know, a cost to the town. So I was wondering, I had the two basic ones for the select board on this, and that's one, a discussion of that, and the other is insurance. What kind of insurance the company has in order to cover such things as that type of thing, or?
So, so we haven't discussed anything to do with that, but then I feel like we're back into an informational meeting.
Well, this is why you mentioned those select boards.
No, I tell, I think it's a relevant question, I think that it is not something that the board has discussed at this time. We are responding to, with the information, or with the, with the Australian ballot vote on- The 18th. We are responding to a petition that was submitted to the select board, and the select board, per state, per state regulation for this opt-in vote for cannabis, is pushing forward with a special meeting, because that's what's required. So at this point-
You mean a special?
No, no. Special vote, right, special meeting, special meeting.
It's a special vote, not a meeting.
Correct. Special vote, sorry, I'll, yes, special vote. So that, that's-
We haven't gotten involved with this at all, as far as the town or the board or anything, it's state, it's state regulated, it's overseen by the state, the town is what gives the approval from the voters, whether they can have the store or not, but as, as a town, we're not held by any regulations to do anything with it. Is, that's as much as we're know, we know about it.
From what, from what I understand about the sales tax piece, is that Groton can impose an excise tax, but it's a sales tax that covers everything, not just cannabis.
All retail stores.
So if you want a local option, sales tax, you know, everything that bills would be taxed additional.
And I didn't think, I thought the legislature had to approve a tax if you're gonna have a town tax.
You'd need to create a sort of retail board, you know.
As far as I know, it's, the legislature oversees.
So what it comes down to is, we haven't gotten to that point with discussing those things.
Every month, there's a public meeting for the cannabis control board, or you can ask those kinds of questions, or public commentary at the beginning of it, so that's, you know, kind of beyond what these guys do, this is, you know, that's if you have a question about the state program, then it would be to the state agency that regulates it. The town doesn't regulate any of that, so, every month it happens.
So, we have lots of hands, you would first.
It seems like this, the community still has a lot of unaddressed questions, and the vote is on the 18th. Do you plan to have a meeting outside, because it, I understand, this is the select board meeting, we have a lot to take care of this evening. Do you plan to have a community open?
We've been doing these little coffee hours on the bills, and you know-
But is that like posted anywhere around dinner hours?
Right there.
We have dinner hours?
We also have an email address, we have a four-year-old daughter, so that's why we don't have dinner hours. Right now, she's jumping on a trampoline at Ben's house with our friend who's watching her, but we don't have a regular babysitter, so that's why we don't have dinner hours. It's a tough time of night for a four-year-old.
But you're welcome to email us and ask us some questions regarding-
It'd be beneficial for you guys to be able to talk to a lot more people.
Yeah, I'm available by phone and email too, so the email is posted in the brochure, just to let you know that we are, we are trying our best to be accessible as much as we are able to.
And I, I think everybody appreciates, you know, that you're available by phone or email, but what that doesn't provide is the entire, you know, a group of interested individuals to also hear the questions and concerns that are being asked of their neighbors and friends, and to have, to hear and, and hear the answers, it's kind of one-off, you know, thing, so. It seems like, you know, you're, you're coming to the community with a big request, and, you know, it just seems like, like that might be a thing to consider.
Yeah, I would hate to have seed voted down, and maybe it's a great thing, but only because people weren't up to speed on things.
Yeah.
And I think the taxing is an open question, I think revenue to the town is another dimension on this. And I just, my concern is, we don't have it fully out there, embedded, in a way that people can make good decisions around.
Well, I definitely encourage all you guys just to look, you know, on the cannabis control board website, there's a frequently asked questions, you can pull up the law and regulations, and community on that, like, I don't know, we could go to like, you know, other towns and have them come and talk about their experiences once it's happened, I guess, I don't know.
But, but it's your business, you want to sell your business, right? This is, this is about selling your product in, in Groton and-
Well, no, it's not your department.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that you want to sell your business, sell your business, just not at the select board meeting. How's that? Please.
Yes, I spoke with the Secretary of State's office, and was told that if a vote is done by Australian ballot, that a informational meeting is supposed to take place.
Yes.
And I understand that you guys somehow got through that. But anyway, I just wanted that to be known. And I strongly feel that the, the select board should have opted for an informational meeting as well.
Also, I'm gonna just, per, you know, per the state regulations, we actually did-
If anybody wants to see the rules and regulations, they're right there.
What happened?
So, so, you know, that's why we didn't have, we weren't mandated to have an informational meeting on this. And, and, you know, we, we did reach out to, we did reach out to VLCT to get additional information about it, their response was, especially the, 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 around the cannabis regulations itself, that, you know, this is a vote by Australian ballot, it is, it is not requiring an informational meeting that's run by the town in reference to this. So, again, it's, it's at our discretion, and I think what we've discussed is that we don't feel like it's, it's warranted for the town to be involved in this informational meeting, if there's going to be one. It would be, I would think, on the owner, onus of the person who submitted the petition to make that happen.
So, the implication would be that the select board, okay, so if the vote happens, vote will happen, if it gets turned down, then is it up to the select board to make the final decision? Or you guys, the vote has a vote?
At that point, that's the decision until another vote is raised by, by, by another vote, by another meeting. That's the regulation, so what it really comes down to is, is there was a petition that came before the select board, the select board opted to have this as a special meeting per state regulations, which is correct. Special vote, well, I mean, it says special meeting, it, a special vote qualifies as a special meeting if we decide it's Australian ballot, that's the requirements for Australian ballot, but, you know, that's what we opted to do, because it's not something that the select board should be making a decision on, this is a decision for the whole community.
You're right, and in doing so-
Doing, the select board should have decided to have an open meeting, an informational meeting.
Please, this is a town event, this is a, it's a, it's a, it's a business that needs state approval and town approval, it's not a town event, it's not something that benefits the town one way or the other, it's not a town thing, a town function. Yeah, that's what I mean, but it's not a town function, we're not-
Just because you're not mandated to have a meeting, doesn't mean you don't have to have a meeting.
But we're not having a meeting.
That's clear.
Okay.
That's clear.
Well, and the proprietor can still have a meeting if they choose to.
Right, and I think that's what our, you know, the, the decision was made was, I, I think it's up to, you know, the retailers that have submitted the petition to hold that informational meeting, so that they can provide that information to the citizens of Groton, to help inform them for this. You know, for me, I understand that, you know, this is a hot topic, this is a very large issue across the country, across the state. It definitely is something, but for, for us as a municipal to jump in to this full, full force, both feet, and, and, you know, not, and do, do things that I, in my opinion, feel like they would, they would not do anything but, I think rile that all up more than it needs to be, you know, to be brought up. Again, I would put the onus back to, you know, the retailer that has put that vote forward, or has put that issue forward for us to vote, to provide that information to those who need to have that information.
Hold on, hold on, Larry, do you want to add?
Yeah, I just think this is just gonna keep going, we made a decision not to hold a meeting. You folks are all welcome here, we're gonna move forward with it, we're gonna do what's right for the town, the town's gonna vote, the people, these fine people here that want to open a business in our town and sell not just the cannabis, but other stuff, that's fine. And we do not need to keep going round and round the table, this is the way it's gonna be, it's up to them, and I said it at the meeting, and when we elected not to have it here, it's up to them to promote it, there's people in this town, yea or nay, let the people. The, the people can look at our website, they can look at our board out here, they can go to the Groton Tire and Auto and look at our warning, they can go to the post office, the information is out there. That's as far as we need to go, it's up to the townspeople now. And it's up to them, in my opinion, if they want this place, they need to do some promotion on it. There's a lot of people, and I'm not yea or nay for it, it's, it's, will be what it will be.
Okay, but as a select board, your responsibility is to the citizens and the town, and the town have to vote on something without any kind of actual forum to understand and ask questions.
Well, I would, I would, I guess Deb, it's-
So you're here tonight to have an informational meeting?
I'm here tonight to do what, to say what I just said.
Okay, nobody's made any contact with us other than-
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard from one person.
Right, and, and I guess-
This is, this is the time.
Well, I guess the-
And thank you for these folks for coming here, because this is, this is a structured, government, Robert's Rules of Order situation, it's not a coffee meeting about something that you have to vote on, where you have no way of asking the, you know, the questions that might be in your mind. If you ask somebody who wants to open a business a question, they're gonna give you the answer that's gonna be to their benefit.
And, and I guess that kind of goes back to the, the conundrum that this is, right? If we have a, if, if we have a select board sanctioned informational meeting, what is the select board preventing, what information is the select board presenting?
Your forum for people to ask questions.
Mike?
In structured way, that's all.
Right, but, but, you know, again Deb, I think the question is, is, we don't have those answers.
Right.
We, we, we are a municipal body that has nothing to do with the state legislation around cannabis, or how it's, how it's sold, or, or whatever. What, I mean, what questions are we gonna do except for what we're doing now? Be a ring, be, be the, you know, be the referee for, for a debate on something that is ultimately being voted on Australian ballot, it's not gonna be voted in, in the public in a special meeting.
I think that's part of your job, to be a referee.
Okay, Tom?
I think you're good with all of the business, and I think this is going around differently, I think you need to move on.
It's exactly what we're gonna do. Sorry, so-
Can I just ask one question, not, did the wine place have to get special permission?
Yeah, they have a liquor permit, right?
Right, liquor permit through the state, right?
Yeah.
Did they have to go to you guys and ask for anything?
No.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, you signed a liquor license.
Oh, we signed a liquor license, but that's all, we, they don't come and get special permission and then vote on from the general.
We didn't have to vote for that, Tom, on?
It's all stated, no.
Beneficial for you guys, because you guys are nice people, I would definitely, because I came in saying, "Er," and I'm meeting you guys, and I would definitely have a meeting, and I, and we are both nice people.
I'm, I'm gonna ask, or, or-
We have no opinions either way, we don't, we're not here, it's a business.
Yeah, I do want to say that I'm, I'm going to try my best to try to figure something out, I understand.
She can come hang out with us, she can come hang out with us.
I would just like to say-
We don't have all the answers, I mean, as far as like, you know, insurance, and like, that's, that's a big, like, we have insurance.
We have a lot of insurance.
But if someone's gonna hurt us, I have no idea.
Again, I think we- To Tom's point, to our point, like, we've, we've got a lot of business to cover today, and, and we've already spent, you know, almost half an hour on this one topic in particular, and, you know, again, we're, we, we made the decision, that's what we have to go with, moving forward, and we need to attend to other business for sure, so, again, I, the, it, I think we got the message pretty loud and clear that, that people want more information. Again, I, I think that it would be in your best interest to consider having some sort of a public meeting to discuss, you know, and give an overview of what, what your business is, and what you're wanting to do, and, but that's not something that the town, and the select board especially, that, that we're, that we're gonna sanction.
Okay, one last thing in the back.
I would just say state mandated vote, and I'm wondering whether there was, has ever been a state mandated Australian ballot vote where the town has not had an informational meeting on it.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any, any recollection of that?
Mike? Just a shameless plug, we do have an open house for the Warwick-Groton Gateway Park meeting, it's June 25th, just before Aldo Lee. I just want to make sure that's out there for this last big group here, we'd really like to see people at the Gateway Park on June 25th at 6:00 p.m., this is on Little Italy Road. And one thing I'd like to say also is that this was on the agenda at the last meeting, and there were no comments about no meeting, or, you know, it went vote, and there were no comments, it went right to this Australian ballot, so, just wanted to add that.
Thanks, thank you, Mike.
I just wanted to add one more thing, please.
Alright.
And I went to the meeting on Monday morning, this dispensary is not, it's for educate, ah, educational, recreational use only, it's not for, there's not going, they're not gonna be selling to, and please finish that for me.
Well, wait a second, we're, we're, no, we're done, we're done, we're, we're done, that's it.
I want people to know that they're not gonna be selling it for-
Are you running this meeting, please?
No, not.
No, the board is running this meeting, enough, it's over, thank you.
She can say that if she sets up a meeting?
You can ask her questions all night.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Alright.
Okay, moving on. Review and adopt procurement policy for grants per town auditors. And we got emails on that review.
I had the two policies in the folder, and I made copies for, I think Larry.
I got one.
And, I don't know if you brought them, I didn't, these are the original ones that you would sign.
Okay.
So-
Did you guys get a chance to review those yet?
Yeah.
So the one is specifically for grants, it's really what we do, that, yeah, this one for grants, and it just needs to be spelled out-
Right.
The way grants want it to say.
Right, which I did review that.
And this one is purchasing and reimbursement, it's what we already do, it's just written out as reimbursement. So those are two policies that the auditors have recommended.
Well, I'll move to, I'll move to adopt these two policies, one for grants and one for purchasing and reimbursement policy.
A second, did you guys have any discussion on that?
We already reviewed it.
No, I think it's, it's already practices that we've got, we've just put in writing to make sure it's being squared away, so.
Okay, good, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Where were we putting the mic, are we moving in next?
Yeah, we're moving out, and you just, I'm moving to the right.
Alright. Okay, so, I guess we'll move along to Highway.
So I put, we had it on paper for roadside mow, no responses from it at all.
Okay, where does that go Harold? Do we do it just the Bridge Weekly?
Bridge Weekly, and most of the three places around town.
Right.
I spoke with Jeremy in Peachville, he's had the same issue.
Okay.
He had one local farmer that put a bid in.
Okay.
Seems to be, you know, everybody that does roadside mowing works for the state, they're not gonna give up their contracts from the state and come per week to the town.
Yep.
So how does the board want to proceed?
Well, last year we rented from Pete's-
Right.
Equipment, and I actually was talking to the town of Kirby today, and they do the same thing, rent to the town, rent from Pete's to the town, and of course, they only use it for one week, so it's what, five or $6,000, last year we were what, two weeks?
Yeah.
Two weeks, which costs us double that, I guess, it's 10, it's gone up, right, 10,000?
This year, it's almost 10 grand for two weeks.
Right, um, so- I'd, I don't know, I'd say we keep renting, is there any way we could shorten it so it didn't cost as much money? Could we shorten it to a week, one year, and, you know, I don't know, I'm just throwing out ideas.
We can't do the whole town a week.
Okay.
But scares me a little bit, I mean, if you don't do it this year, then, you know, it keeps building up, um.
Well, we spend the ten thousand dollars, or we have to buy some piece of equipment that we own to do it, which, what's that cost?
I looked at a tractor at the municipal show in Barry, that was a hundred and seventy thousand.
Right, we could do a lot of ten thousand dollar mowings a year for, and the maintenance and the breakdowns and the, so, okay.
I did look at, into loader mounted roadside mower, that's like a hundred fifteen, a hundred twenty, didn't have the exact number, but I talked to him. You know, then we could do it at our schedule.
Right.
Twelve years is, I mean, if we put, even put a hundred hours on it a year, you know, that's still low hours for a diesel engine.
Right. It's a lot of money for two weeks out of the year per se, and then you gotta store it somewhere, and you gotta take it on and put, take it off, and then if it gets broken or something happens, then we spend more money on it.
Right.
I, in my opinion, it's easier to rent a tractor for two weeks, but what do you guys think?
I think rental's the way to go, you know your costs, you know.
Right.
What it is each year, you buy something, works good for a few years, then it can be enormous cost.
Right.
With a machine like that, it, yeah. To me, it would make sense to rent.
So I have two weeks reserved, one in June, one in August. We haven't signed a contract on it, but I have reserved the weeks.
Good.
Good job.
So.
That sounds like, I think that's exactly what you think, that's, that's the way to go.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go.
Is that work for you?
That's fine by me.
Okay. Let's do that, what else, Harold?
Um, we got the sunroof cleaned up, um.
Which looks great, thank you.
The fire department gave the highway department their container, so we got that moved up to town garage. And we've been cleaning around town garage, we got rid of two of our sheds that are out back.
Which looks great too, thank you.
Um, and dig save finally came today after two weeks, so we can start digging on the graveyard.
Okay.
About it.
Okay, that sounds good, what about our, have we already done our calcium chloride stuff and all that, okay?
Yeah, a month ago.
Yeah, that's right, we got bids on that, and you got your paving, which, you're doing powder spraying, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe the contract's in here.
Yeah, so, okay, good?
Pretty good shape.
What about, uh, your truck, are you starting to do anything with that for?
I've got one quote for Sam Blasting, I haven't done any further with that yet.
Okay.
I do get five months' deal to fix some of the bodies we expensed.
Okay.
That we'll do ourselves. I just have to head down to get it over to Charlie Boys to have them.
Okay.
Give me an estimate, yeah.
Okay, oh, you gotta take it all, all the way over to Charlie Boys to get an estimate?
They're gonna wanna look at it.
Well, they couldn't send the guy down for, geez, okay. All right, that sounds good, anything else?
That's all I got.
Okay, um, treasurer.
Lisa, what do you got?
Okay, I'll be on your desk, I've handed out the budgets to all the departments, and you guys have them, we're at forty-three percent. Um, I've also handed out the reserve, um, fund, reserve balances, that's on a separate one piece of paper, yep. And so that's where we're at with our reserves. Been working a lot with the town auditors, getting them, I think they should be all set, I think I've gotten them all the information.
Okay, good.
Twice. Um, thank you for adopting those two policies. Um, there's several contracts in the folder to sign, like we've, all the Vorrick and the, um, highway paving, um, I think there's five in there. You've already approved, it's just now we're getting to the contract part. Um, there is, if you've been watching the news, the, um, childcare, um.
Tax.
Tax, contribution tax, so. I thought I had that paper on, right here.
Point four.
So it starts in July first, uh, twenty twenty-four, um, it's point four four percent payroll tax, and, um, most towns are having the select board approve it's happening anyways, it's state, so it's Act Seventy-Six, the Childcare Contribution Special Fund, so. I have paper for you.
Um, I'll do it as a motion. Town of Groton, um, I'm gonna move Town of Groton pay a point four four percent payroll tax on employee wages paid on, or after July first, twenty twenty-four, in accordance with Act Seventy-Six, to the Childcare Contribution Special Fund.
Okay, we need a motion?
I just moved it.
I was reading, second.
Is there any discussion?
Is there any discussion? I guess we have discussion.
Um, is any amendment to be passed on to the employees of the town run? Because a quarter of it can be.
Well, it shouldn't be.
I don't know the answer to that.
I didn't know if the motion mentioned that, but.
Not specifically, um, no.
I don't, yeah.
We haven't even, I just heard about it, like, a little bit ago.
I understand if the town, um, could pay point three three percent, and employee can pay point eleven, that's how I understand it, if, if.
Okay.
Okay.
That is, that is accurate, however, the town can choose to pay the full, uh, full.
We're watching the meeting after training on it, and that, that's what, this is what most towns.
Is this.
Uh, I guess we haven't really discussed it, so. Do we have to?
It starts July first, so.
We got some time.
Yeah, should not have another meeting, so.
I know, it would have to be.
I know, we just never talked about it, so, maybe we, we should talk about it.
And we can table the motion to the next meeting.
But it starts July first, can we?
I have to do it July first, I mean, Nembroke's going to do it.
Yeah, well, we, it still has to be a point four four percent tax.
Right, total, yeah.
Total.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, I mean, that.
Well, we can, we can change it, if we decide at the next meeting, we can change it.
We'll adopt this, and at the next meeting, we'll have to determine what the breakdown of that percentage is.
Right.
If, if, if we're gonna require employees to pay a portion of that.
Yeah, but you don't have to.
No.
No, but I think we should discuss it, so I think it would be a good idea to talk about, so.
Well, that's ridiculous.
Welcome to the room. Welcome to the world of texts.
Um, so, I mean, the, what we need to probably specify as part of this is, you know, who's paying what portion now, I mean, at least, so, is, is the town gonna take?
Well, I guess at this point, we're paying, as of July first, we're paying the full amount, but we'll, we'll discuss at the next meeting and decide, and it can be edited, is what I'm saying.
Do we know what the full amount is? I mean.
Point forty.
What, what does that mean?
On five hundred.
So.
Two dollars and fifty cents.
No, I get that, but five hundred that translates.
It's, it's basically for every five.
Thousand dollars?
Well.
What's it say?
Well, it says, it says, uh.
Is it twenty thousand a year?
Well, the example is, is if for every five hundred dollars a payroll, it's two dollars and twenty cents is what it equals out.
And then how much a payroll would be?
Uh, that's a question of a lot, I mean, I don't, yeah, we'd have to figure that out.
I don't have that in my system.
That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, right. So, for now.
I ask out of curiosity, I think it's just eyes wide open going in, so.
Right.
All right.
But we can change it, is what I'm saying, we gotta pay it starting July first, and then we can always amend it, and either give back or take back or pay in, whatever, it's, it's not in.
I agree.
Like stone, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's, that's fine, we can approve it, all in favor of approving that, say aye, and then we can.
Yep.
Uh, edit it.
Right, yep, so, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I think we need to just discuss that at the next meeting.
So we'll put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, what else, Lisa?
I worked with, um, Mike Namias, uh, last week on, on Vorick grant reimbursement, so that's been submitted, the first one, so we'll see how quick that turns around. Um, I have the financial questionnaire that we have to do every year, so I've highlighted the spots that you guys need to, um, read and sign.
Okay. Select board members attended any financial training?
Not for a while, not for, for, you know, for three years.
You need signatures on that?
Yeah, I need the, um, signature on the bottom.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Probably from Tristan, but then I think there's one other question, isn't there, no?
Yep, there, there's another question, yeah. Uh, no, no, that was the only question, I guess.
Okay, all right.
Um. Does the same individual open the mail-in deposit checks? That was the only other question that's not checked out.
Which I did talk to the auditor too.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
That's all good.
Yep, so, I think it's, you just gotta sign it.
Um, so bank statements, um, we'll have to, um, change that whole process.
Oh, Zach, here, all right.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, so it's, I need to borrow money. So I have a paper for the tan note, I'll borrow from the tan note.
Yeah. Um. Larry, um. You want this as a motion too, or is it just?
I don't know if it has to be, but.
I don't think it needs to.
We'll just date it in the minutes, and I'll have the document.
Um, okay, yep, all good. We need to state how much. Well, we can state how much it is. Tan, tan notes, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars, and we're borrowing a thou- a one hundred thousand dollars.
We're borrowing a hundred thousand.
Casella and Myers, so.
Just say we're borrowing a hundred thousand.
Um, Myers bill is about a hundred and fifty-eight, a hundred and fifty-nine a month for one pickup of recycle and one pickup of garbage. And a few weeks ago, we got a large Myers.
Greenup day, right?
For greenup day, and so Tristan and I talked and asked me to look at Casella, and their price is one sixty, twenty-four, so it's the same amount, but they do pick up twice a month.
Which is even better, and they'll bring us a bear dumpster, right?
Yeah, that's including the twenty a month for a bear lid, although I have to say that the lid with the little walk on it now is.
Working.
The bear isn't there, it's not getting.
Billy comes back.
Yeah, so.
Well, I don't know, I, I mean, it seems like it'd be better if it's the same price, pick up twice a month versus once a month, so the garbage isn't sitting in there, which causes the bear to, attracts the bear, so, that would be good. I don't know, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I, I would agree, I mean, and that's with a specific bear-proof dumpster.
Dumpster, yeah.
Which means, really, it's cheaper than that, too.
Right.
Okay, so you want me to change, okay?
Yep.
Um, okay, so I had given, um, the information was in the folder about the V L C T pass up, the building check that we get every year, and there's, you know, a few things that need to be fixed, so we do need to find an electrician. So, um, so, um, I was thinking of two people, maybe, I think Kevin Hamlet might be an electrician, he lives in town, and Paul Emerson, I believe, is an electrician who lives in town. So maybe they're not as busy or could find time to help Groton. Um.
Yep, yep.
Tim Corrigan's just too busy.
He is busy, yeah, I don't know, Kevin works for Riggy, I think he still works for Doug Riggy, Riggy Electric.
I don't know, I, these were just ideas of people, if you have anybody else, then certainly can. So I think we need to reach out and see, because we still have a spouse that needs to be changed, and the other thing is the furnace, like, the electrical part of the furnace.
Right, right, and even I was noticing the gazebo, the light is not really that safe, it's up there, we should have something that's a little safer, somebody could break it.
Missing a bolt too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Brent's.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I think that is all I have for myself, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, so Carrie's out tonight, she left a note, um.
Do you want me to read it, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, Dan has been working hard contacting dog owners and reminding them of the need to get their dogs licensed, reminder that this is a state law. I have licensed two hundred and sixty-eight dogs as of today, with forty-one still on the list. Dan has spoken to many of them, most are waiting to get their new rabies vaccine for their dog. A few he has gotten a hold of, but will keep trying, a few he hasn't gotten a hold of, he'll keep trying. Um, the men's softball league, they're gonna be using Puffer Field this summer, so I think they started on Sunday, so that's exciting to see. Um, the national opioid settlement, I talked about the last meeting, I reached out to the Fast Squad, and they, and they feel that there is nothing in the acceptable uses that applies to them, so we've declined the settlement. Retail cannabis vote on June eighteenth from ten to seven, and it's in the town clerk's office, absentee ballots can be requested in person, phone, or email. Also through the state online site, mvpvermont.gov, thank you, Carrie.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question with the softball, can they get some cigarette dispensers down there, because my grandchildren play down there, and they always cigarette butts in the. I mean, I don't wanna encourage anybody to go and smoke down there, but there are people that are smoking down there, um, and there's, I cleaned it up several times.
The problem is, we don't really have anybody that like, kinda grounds oversees that type of stuff, we've talked about having like trash in the park, and, you know, but we don't have people to pick up trash, and. Is the only problem we have with that stuff, we could put a bucket there, but.
Can we encourage them, they're, they're adults, they can grab a coffee can with them, they have those, they bring it, yeah, but somebody has to go and maintain it. I'll dog the day.
Um, who's in charge of the men's softball league?
Yeah.
Carrie knows, Carrie knows, I don't.
So maybe Carrie can follow up with them and just say, you know, again, if you're gonna lose the field, if you're gonna use the field, that's part of the reason why it's there, but we need to take care of it, because there are kids that play on that field, there are other.
Sure, Carrie will reach out.
Like, they need to clean up after themselves.
Okay. Yep. Okay, we were, okay, so, Dorothy.
Um, I had a locksmith in demand to get, um, fix one of the fireproof, um, file cabinets that had been locking, it's been bothering for a while, and now it completely stopped. So he came this afternoon, um, and worked on two of the file cabinets, so he's got them fixed, and, and they're, they're very good. Um, Gary has been helping with a couple of, I had some, you know, issues with my computer in Nembroke, he's got that fixed. And then John has been having trouble printing from his computer down to this, um, printer, and he's, Gary's got that figured out. Um, John's coming tomorrow, it'll be the third day that we've done onsite inspections, and we should be able to finish them up tomorrow. We're working towards getting everything finalized, um, and I did mail the first, uh, box of maps they, under Pennsylvania, I think I mailed them Monday, so hopefully, um, I've got it, I've got it figured out, so there's only gonna be four boxes. So I sent it one box, and when I get that one box back, then I'll mail the next box, that's the map restoration grant, so.
Okay.
Um, that's in the works.
What about, um, what about our, you were looking for somebody to do the pictures and all that, how's that coming?
Um, we've had some applicants, we're still, we're talking with applicants at this point, so, we haven't, um, we haven't finalized anything yet.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Dorothy.
And we do have the tablet, I've got, I'm working with Gary, I'm getting the software on there, and getting that all up, ready to go, so.
Okay, 'cause actually you can be, you could be using it now, right, you've been working on, okay, all right, so, so hopefully, in the next few months, you'll. So, so hopefully in the next few months, you'll find somebody that can do that, or.
Yes, so hoping that, yeah, we're hoping to have the pictures done by November first, so. That's, you know, meanwhile, you're a deadline for that, and the other position is gonna be year-round, so I'm working on that also.
Okay. Good, thank you. Fire and fast.
Okay, I have, work here for the fire department. We've had several meetings and lots of discussion about the grants that are coming up. The drainage project and also the Groton Gateway. We had a meeting last night and we kind of finalized some more items that we wanted on, just concerns to bring to you folks. With the drainage project, I guess our biggest questionnaire is what the plan is as far as the fire station and access during the project. Are we gonna need to move trucks? Are we gonna be able to get in and out?
So, there was discussion, we had a discussion about all of that at pre-bid and, and so on and so forth, and, of course, the bidders that were there, you know, were, they would. It would be full access is what the plan was, but the days that it would be messed up, or there would be twenty-four hour notice that the fire trucks would have to be somewhere else, because they couldn't get out of the fire station or something like that, so.
So, you're thinking, you're saying that that would be like a one-day thing?
Yeah, it's not gonna be, they'll be able to, the way the project, they can finish up so that there's access to, to come and go with the fire trucks. If for some reason there's not access that day, then they're supposed to notify us or you to let you know the fire trucks would have to be staged somewhere else for the day.
Cause even, we can work it so that we can just get out one door if we need to. All three rigs can go out one door.
Better when the contractor comes here and starts, we'll have a, we'll have a chat about it all and figure out a plan to make that work, because. The plan, depending on the contractor, is to start down below and work its way up through, so, but this contractor could come and do it the other way, so we, we don't really have. Like, a plan yet until they let it know.
I, I would suggest when they come for, and we know when they're gonna start work, would be to have a representative from the fire department to be able to meet with them. So that they can have an exchange of contact information as well. I'd hate for, if you get garbled in translation between everybody, you know, it'd be great to have, you know, whoever's managing the project. Have, you know, have ways or your number or whoever, like, to call to say, hey, this is what we've got going on, so you guys can move the fire trucks and.
What about fast, same thing, right?
Should be the same deal, we would have to stage rescue somewhere else. If, depending on the temperature outside that day, we might have to pull some gear, we do have some medications that can't get right out, it can't be really cold.
They know as part of the project to keep it, you know, it's a limited thing.
Yes, I mean, there's, there's plenty of places around town that we can safely target.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, and then on the, I guess our biggest concern is the Groton Gateway project. At this point, we have a knocks box and a key on the engine, and we are asking that a knocks box needs to be added to, or to the, to the rescue rig. For access, for whatever the key is, when you decide about the gates and the key. And so that, that expense should be included in what you're looking at with grant funding, to add that to the rescue rig. So that it's the engine, so the engine would have access, but then also the rescue rig would have access to that key also.
Yeah, I don't know if we're doing keys, or we do combinations, or what, we're, we haven't figured this out, we haven't even got that far.
We haven't got that far with it, so what I would say is, is, obviously, we're gonna have discussion, ongoing discussions about gates involving the trails and all of that stuff. I would definitely say that that, the fire department needs to be a part of that conversation, should be here for that. Just looking down the list, all these other questions, it seems like a site visit with Mike and Mike and the fire department to go over some of the gateway project stuff might be prudent. Because I don't know the answer to these questions. I think we're gonna have to, you know, again, just for, for the sake of time, maybe scheduling some time to do that.
Part of the project. And to be honest with you, we don't, it could be years before we get ga, you know what I mean, like, we're not there yet, we just started discussing it and talking about it.
Here's one from Mike and Mike, please. These are just, part of our concerns that we want the select board to be aware of.
Yep.
So, the landing zone, you know, we need to have access to that, pump sites and the dry hydrant. There was a discussion about the bridge over Keenan Brook, and is that bridge gonna be wide enough and sturdy enough to hold the fire trucks? The gates on the railroad bed. We're really looking for locks, not, not a combination lock. At two AM, in the snow, it's, it's not gonna be real effective. It's not gonna be real good for us to be trying to get a combination lock open. Gates need to be wide enough for the fire.
In the snow, you wouldn't be using a railroad bed anyways. You wouldn't be using it in the snow anyways.
Very well, it could be if there was an accident or something.
Oh, you would, no, but the gates would be open, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. We're really hoping not to have combination locks. We've had problems with those in the past. Gates wide enough for the fire trucks to get through, and then mutual aid departments, Rite Aid, Peachum, and Tri-Village need to have access to the landing zone and the drafting site. Because if we're in an incident, if we're in a fire, they're gonna be setting up the landing zone or drafting, so they also need access to those areas.
Yeah, again, I, I would say, you know, it may be.
I can answer all the questions here.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're taking into account all the uses of that property as part of the plan, so we know where the, the landing zone is, we know where all the site roads are. The fact of the matter is that property is in the flood plain, it's in the river corridor, there's not much we can actually do to it. So, leaving it exactly as is, is pretty much part of the plan for the stuff in the, in the land, and the landing zone is also in the flood zone, so there's really not much we can do there. The pump site, dry hydrant have been mapped and located, those are sensitive areas where, where this is going into the project. The state had said to us, well, we want the entire gateway project to be open to the public and for recreational use, and I objected to it completely. I said, we have life safety issues here in town, we've got helicopters that need to land there, we've got, fire department has to access the dry hydrant. So, the Green Mountain Power property, which we're acquiring, that's the one that's the recreational access covenant on the deed or whatever. But we, we are definitely taking into account the existing infrastructure that's there and, and making sure that that remains clear for use. And we'd be willing to meet with you down there, June twenty-fifth, we are having a big group meeting down there with our park planner, so to, to. Point out like the size of the area that's needed would be probably prudent for their planning purposes, for them to know, okay, here's a whole hands-off area, we can't do anything. As it is now, it's just a blob on the map, it's not, it's not measured, it's just, here's where the helicopters land, here's where the fire trucks need to get water, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
And then the Keenan Brook, the bridge there, that's the one that we were doing for the.
Yeah, that stuff, right.
As I said, that's not part of the gateway project, and I think at this point, when we've got bridge designs and we've looked at how that was designed specifically to be able to hold vehicles to cross, so. I don't think there's any concern with that, but Harold's probably the right contact to, for the, that project, right?
So, the only concern with the one, if they go with the Wood Death Bridge, that's, I believe, is all right. According to state rules, it's only a sixteen thousand pound bridge. But there's gonna be enough ivy beams underneath that, you could drive a tank across it? I mean, there's no issues, I, I foresee no issues. It's wide enough, I mean, the groomer's gotta go through it. So if the groomer can fit through it, if you can't get a fire truck through it, you shouldn't be driving it, in my opinion.
So it'd be at least twenty feet wide, because the groomer has to get through, so.
Yeah, right, so it's, it's not an issue.
Okay. All right.
And it's on town property, it's not a town road, so the rules may not even apply to that.
Okay. And then, one other thing, I'll try to remember, the parking area for the, that's put in for the trail. We, we'll discuss that a little bit further down. Okay, is that?
That's it.
Okay.
I got a question for Dorothy. So, are you done? Okay, I'll wait.
I think she's done.
I'm all done.
Okay, fire chief, could, like, see him show up at some meetings?
Okay.
Where are we at in the process of a new chief?
Um, it's in the process where the, the department's working on it.
Okay, okay, so we're grooming somebody that's gonna come in and, I mean, we're six months into the year now, so we got six months left.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I, I would like to know who, who we're earmarking for that and. Or if we get it, if there's somebody that you have in mind.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass it on.
All right, thanks.
Okay, fast?
Fast went online, that's the name. We run about fifteen calls this year, oh, this month, and month and day, sorry. The EMS conference is back for the first time since COVID, so we'll be putting that training budget to good use. It's not a bad schedule, which kind of stinks, but it's, the classes are Wednesday through Saturday, we know Sunday, of course, it's, we have a handful of people attending, so.
Good.
Very excited to have that back available to us.
Good.
Be at J D this year.
Okay.
Other than that, pretty comfortable.
Okay, excellent. One more thing Dorothy, I was thinking about, what about our fire station, or where are we at with the, the bid stuff?
We have it, we have everything.
Okay, so, so, but we, it was put out, it was in the paper, it was put out to bid?
It was, yeah, in the Bridge Weekly probably two weeks ago now.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're having a problem with the Bridge Weekly, obviously, because it doesn't come to our homes anymore, so it's kind of a disadvantage to be advertising in the Bridge Weekly when nobody really gets it. So, we may have to look at some other options. I don't, I don't even know what the plan is.
Journal opinion would be a good.
The Bridge Weekly, because they had to change printers and, so.
They're shifting the homes everywhere.
So.
They're postal rights.
Post offices get stacks of them and local stores get stacks of them, and it's up to people to go and grab it.
Wow.
Are we able to ask for bids over the radio? Is that something that we could put on W Y there?
Yeah, I don't see why not. No, it sounds like a good idea.
I mean, we could do that, anything, anything in addition to what we do is.
Yeah, I mean, the J L.
To make sure that we're meeting that specification, and I think we have to put it in the paper, I think that's part of the.
Well, we should post it on.
Is that something that Carrie can post through the town, like Facebook page, or, I mean, I don't know what the rules are about requesting bids.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
I, I think the order, we just have an ordinance that tells us where they go, but, I mean, again, anything above and beyond what's required shouldn't be an issue. As long as we're meeting the state requirements for.
Well, look what happened with the bid on the, the rail trail there, it got in the right places and it was like, was a wildfire, so it's just a matter of reaching, reaching.
About like, what was it, Valley News or?
The Vermont system, I think is what that's called.
Yeah, so.
It's easy to make an account, but once you do and you put a bid out, all these places call you, it's like, people from California.
Oh, Jesus. Well, we might be able to get a good deal.
Somebody asks like, what award you bid in, how much, unit cost, and, but then they don't answer.
We also pushed it out to potential members, too, to make. Right, right. Well, well, it's something to talk about, to reaching out a little bit further and seeing if we can get a better, a better thing. Is that it?
I think the question then is, is what's the, what's the, what's the plan now, because the, you know, the fire, the roof and the fire station needs to be repaired or replaced, so.
It was just shored up for the winter or whatever, temporary section, so.
Just the furnace room was all, was fixed for the winter.
Okay, let's see if we can get it out a little bit further.
Okay. So I'm thinking, we'll try to maybe get it over to the World, which is in the Bay Area, the Journal Opinion, and maybe Calabria.
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Library.
Hi, I wanted to just publicly acknowledge and recognize our library director, Sarah Spira, for receiving her certificate of public librarianship. She completed over a hundred and fifty continuing education units through the Department of Libraries, to be exact. Now, you know that Sarah does have a master's degree in library science, so this is in addition to that. And she was recognized along with, I think there were thirty-two other certificates distributed or presented at the library conference at Valentine on May twentieth. We're gonna host a little acknowledgement or meeting tomorrow night for Sarah.
Okay.
We've also hired two assistants, they are both local, and we've split the number of hours that was approved at town meeting for that position. So now we have two people at the library during all open hours, which was one of the goals of that. And we were, we were asked to submit further information for that large grant. And Rural Edge is working on that, because most of the new information was sort of fell under their umbrella, so that is being provided. We take that as a bid sign, that, you know, we are possibly still being considered, but those grants haven't been awarded yet. And lots going on at the library over the summer. We encourage people to take a look at our Facebook page and, you know, other, other social media, Instagram and the website. And posting Vermont Humanities, um, event this Friday at five thirty.
Okay, great. Lots of stuff, good. Thank you. Constable Daniel.
I'm gonna be leaving June eighteen, on a trip, I'll be back July twelfth, and start back at Crafton July fifteenth.
Busy schedule, okay. So, do you have an assistant for all these positions? Okay, anything else on, under Constable?
Just lots of calls.
Okay, how about zoning administrator?
Things going well, no issues.
Okay.
Carrie and I are gonna take care of that while you're gone, if she has a question, she can call me.
Okay, good. How about health officer Dan?
Lots of dog bites.
Okay, which, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. How about Namias, anything?
I don't, I, just about the drainage, I can talk about that. USDA is wanting a pre-construction meeting on June fourteenth, around eight fifteen in the morning. Select board is not required to come, but of course, I think it should come, but.
Right, which would be a good time to, to talk about the fire department stuff, too.
I haven't, I got confirmation with USDA, but I haven't gotten confirmation with Nate or Alliance yet, but tentatively, June fourteenth at eight in the morning, eight fifteen in the morning.
Okay.
So originally, Alliance was going to work, start the project mid-June, but with this USDA meeting happening mid-June, everything's pushed out, so I don't have dates.
Okay.
So.
All right, keep us up to date.
I will, I ask a lot, so.
Perfect. Anything on their IT?
Oh, can we go back on Namias?
Oh, yeah.
We've talked about the toilet in there, we have a plumber, we think it's a seal, we spilled water on the floor.
Oh, the toilet, okay. Who does, who does that, who does that?
At, at Akin, Akins, yeah, I call, I'll call, I haven't been asked, so I, I.
Okay, good, anything else? IT? Okay, planning commission?
Yeah, we've met, we met last night, the planning commission, and we have another open house, so, I don't think it's actually like a formal planning commission meeting, but it's an open house at the Stumpbun. I know I mentioned it earlier. There'll be handouts and a press release also going out, so you'll see it, perhaps not in the Bridge Weekly, if you don't. Uh, there'll be handouts and a press release also going out, so you'll see it, um, perhaps not in the Bridge Weekly, if you don't pick it up with Phil's, but it'll be in the Journal Opinion, Calum E. Record. And it's just gonna say what the project's about, um, invite folks to come down and give their ideas for sort of what, what, what do you vision for, for the Green Mountain Power property? Um, and parts of the stump dump, and I think there's a lot of people that haven't been there, so, uh, the goal is to have the meeting there, uh, rain or shine, bring easy up, and if it's raining, uh, we, uh, we talked about, um, so that's June twenty-fifth at six P M. Uh, one of the things we're gonna have, I'll talk to Lisa about it, but we're thinking about having at least drinks there for people, it's kind of a sunny, warm spot, if it's a nice hot afternoon, probably a good thing to, to have. Um, make it more inviting, hopefully people will show up, so get the word out, or, um, our grant agreement, we're to track how many people come to this, uh, and so we're really hoping, uh, there's some sort of turnout. Um, the other thing I wanted to follow back up with you on was the Village Trust Initiative, we submitted, Mike Welch, um, submitted a, uh, intake form for that. We have a meeting, or an interview with the, I forgot the name of the acronym, it's like P something, something V T. Uh, we have an interview this Friday with them, I guess to discuss what the town's interested in doing, or not the town, but what, what this group is doing, I'm not really too ver- uh, too knowledgeable on it, uh, but that is this Friday, and then our next, um, step, our, our town plan, uh, needs to be updated by May eighth, or May twenty-twenty-five, excuse me, not May eighth, uh, per, you know, statute or whatever, uh, so we'll be doing that. I don't know how robust our update will be, because we're really wrapped up in the park planning project, um, and it's, um, yeah, so that's what I got for the planning commission.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Um, and then I guess ongoing, ongoing grants and projects and whatever, N E K.
Yeah, so two, two, two big things there, one is the email, um, that distributed this time, area for
I think we all have thought.
Uh, N E K, um
Yeah, true.
Can we do broadband as opposed to merger agreement, uh, with CP fiber? The other communication union district in the central part of the state, so kind of very water berry, um, E small P O year, that zone is about eighteen pounds. Two important aspects of that, one is, um, uh, there, uh, N E K broadband is assuring towns that current build-out plans are not gonna be changed, uh, as a result of the merger. Um, and then number two, this is just a preliminary announcement, there's a whole process, it's kind of outlined in the email I sent you. Um, it's gonna culminate August fifteenth in a sort of official, you know, vote to, uh, make it happen. Um, there's all kinds of work before then though, so, uh, I mean, I couldn't even project if it's gonna happen or not, I mean, the intent is to happen, but they're trying to merge cultures, pull together an integration plan, merge organizations, all that sort of stuff, so, um, if I sense at all that Rotten will be disadvantaged as a result of this, you'll hear about it in July.
We'll get a refund.
Well, um, that's the second
I see things have been busy.
No, no, that's the second part, so the second part is, stuff's been happening.
Yeah.
So, uh, they've been in our area for around the last month, uh, Great Road, Minor Hill, Scott Highway, um, the O L T equipment shed. Um, what I was told is they're kind of finishing off some splicing and testing, and we have new, uh, new O L T equipment here, so there's a little extra work. Right now, barring any unforeseen circumstances, they expect to light the zone sometime in July.
Good.
Which is gonna be, services gonna start to be offered down the Great Road, Minor Hill, probably a little part of Scott Highway, down to the O L T equipment shed. Peacham went live, I think at the end of April, so they've got customers coming on board, and so that group's gonna, uh, light up here in July, next month. Uh, on the grant front, Community Connect Grant was the, uh, two point eight five million dollar grant that we, uh, applied for originally last June, had to resubmit in February because of the, uh, USDA didn't follow the statute. Um, we've heard some news on that, um, there's a USDA rep, or our field rep in this part of the country has been assigned to come in and validate some things for us, which is a good sign, uh, which indicates we're still under consideration at this stage, we've been told, or N E K Broadband's been told to expect an answer sometime between this July and September, around that. Uh, if we don't get that grant, uh, N E K Broadband, um, is now thinking something called a Reconnect Five loan, which is a two percent loan from USDA that they would go secure, uh, to cover the same geographical area as the Community Connect Grant essentially was, uh, which is most of the rest of Rotten. So, we've got a backup plan now, in case Community Tech Connect doesn't happen, they, there are, uh, a bunch of the environmental, uh, historical, archaeological re- review that needs to be done. They say that could take up to eight months, um, especially for a town like Rotten that's got a lot of, uh, conservation land, state land. Um, so N E K Broadband's, uh, gonna try to get ahead of that, and they're pretty confident that one of those two options will come in, um, and they're gonna bring on a consultant to start that timetable as well. And then, if the two options fail, we're looking at the deed money, which is the broadband's funds that the state of Vermont, I think, had two hundred and twenty-nine million dollars, it's all being divvied up, but that's not gonna get divvied up until next summer, okay? But assuming the first two, C B C, the Community Connect Grant or Reconnect Five happens, we're really, the rest of Rotten is gonna start being built out, expected with the, all the review process by mid-twenty-twenty-five, so
Good.
I think we, we, we're starting to see the light at the end of things, um, and, and stuff's happening, and, and they're kind of working through a lot of things, as they you've heard me say, deal with shortages of this and workforce issues there and all that sort of stuff, but, um, I think the, the light is almost there at the end of the tunnel.
They're everywhere too, I see them in Newbury, they're all, they're, they're working.
And you'll see, uh, Eustis trucks around too, they're doing stuff, there's pole work being done to modernize the poles, and, uh, seeing some of that happening as well, so it's kind of moving, and, um, uh, I can't wait until, you know, this July, we'll light up these houses.
Good, yeah, exciting, okay, great.
Do you need powder to do that?
What's that?
Do you need powder to do that?
You need, uh, access to utility
So, can you be, for
I've got the work.
You've got the work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I forgot to ask about open house parking for this, can we use the stump dump, the lower area for parking, uh, during that open house on the twenty-fifth, is that gatelocked or? It's not
Okay. Yeah, tell me.
Yeah, our plan, um, is to have that open, area open.
Right, which is good.
Yeah.
We wanna talk about the upper parking lot too.
Yeah.
We're, we're kind of, we're kind of flaring, I both looked at it, and, um, I rode my bike down there, and it's very small. Like, like it's not very usable, like, it, it's, like, if you pull a vehicle in there, I don't know how another vehicle's gonna
So, yeah.
It was
I pulled a pickup truck in there, and boy, it was a mistake, uh, it was like a seven-point turn to get out of it.
Yeah, so how could we fix, can we do something?
I was debating, like, I'm still brainstorming what to do, is it, do we, um, you know, like
Make an in and an out, could we have an in and an out?
We could probably do that.
And then you would pull in, back out, and go out, otherwise you would have to go
Yeah.
It would, and it probably can't.
It, it's either, yeah, the thoughts I had were adding an exit or up to the road, but it kind of has dropped down a little bit.
Right.
Um, but in and out is probably a better, a cheaper idea.
If we can with the town, I don't, you know
I still have some, I still have some funds in the budget for the Trailhead, um, like three thousand dollars, that could easily be used to, um, expand, do something different with that. I noticed that myself, and it's just been sort of
Yeah, Larry, cause Larry's like, whoa, did you see how small it was, and I'm like, well, not really, so, but, so anyways, and I don't know, Harold, would that be a problem, having another access there?
I don't like the access that's already there.
Yeah.
Um, because when you pull out of there, I mean, it's an incline, you can't see if someone comes up over the knob.
Right.
Um, so if there was a curb cut down, I would deny putting there, I would put it at the upper end, just to give more sight distance for cars coming up through there.
What about an in and an out, meaning if you made it an in and an out, so the visibility would be better, you go in and you come out?
In or end, that's fine.
Yeah, maybe that is, and then you just park straight in, like, parallel park on each side of, you know, a main walk entryway or something, instead cause pulling in, like, I was in with the full size F one fifty
Doesn't work.
It was, yeah, I was like, uh-oh, wish I had my car. Uh, so that's something I could talk to, Blue Mountain's gonna be up that way doing, uh, the Trailhead work, um, so maybe I can ask them for quick proposals for just dropping a second curb cut in at the west, east, no, west, I'm sorry.
That was
Uh, see if that works a little better.
And then, you know, then if you're really gonna do that, you'll get an out signs, I would say, and then that is all
Yeah.
Visibility and your whatever.
Yep.
I, I have something, I think there needs to be a sign placed down there, Mike, saying all dogs have to be leashed.
Okay.
Uh, because I've had several people now come to me in concern, walking on the tracks, they've been accosted by dogs.
I caught a couple of stray dogs on the game cameras.
Yeah.
Um, all right, right down there, just there, um, just
I did too.
Yeah, big one.
Yeah, big nasty, big hound.
Yeah, those two, those are the two I got, yeah.
Mike, when are they gonna start on the culverts? You just get the contract.
Yeah, just the contract here.
You got it all, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, wow, that
That was painful.
That's a big
Yeah.
That's about eighty calls.
And a lot of calls here.
I think I had four calls.
I had four too. Uh, the culverts are at the end of the month, and then Blue Mountain starts after that. Um, one of the other things I was thinking with Blue Mountain is checking the parking lot out and seeing if it needs more materials possible, maybe after settling, it might need a little material, so seeing if that is something they can do, if needed. Um, so Hogan said by the end of July, uh, June, excuse me, he'd have the culverts in, and then, uh, Blue Mountain, uh, I'll have to talk to them to see what their schedule is. We were just confirming with them that the culverts would be in by July first.
Uh, good.
The Green Mountain Power, like, uh, was it the title report, uh, we sent it to the state for review, they came back with multiple questions. Some of them, they couldn't even explain what the question was, and I, I asked them, well, what does this mean, like, who asked this question, but, you know, I sent it to our town attorney, I didn't hear anything back. Um, you know, I decided just to send it to Green Mountain Power, um, and then took their answer and generically put some more information in. They came back, uh, asking for further clarification, to which, uh, I just said, like, we need a yes or a no, acquire the property or not, like we were supposed to, one of the things they, Green Mountain Power had said, it was about releasing a interest in the property that's from Chase National Bank. And if we were to do that, we would have had to hire an attorney in Texas to work with Chase National Bank to have the, this thing removed. I, I told the state, we would refuse to do that, we're not doing that, and Green Mountain Power said, don't do it, we're just donating it to you for a dollar. The reason these banks have interest in their property is for insurance purposes, and so they're actually have more, they have interest in their active properties, not this property here in the middle of Rotten that's not being used. Uh, so, long story short, uh, F B R said, it's your, go for it, uh, you can get the property, so now the next step, I just sent an email to Carolyn, asking her to draft a deed, um, Green Mountain Power. Uh, it just said, once they have a deed, they'll sign it, and, um, we'll, we'll record the survey, we'll record the, the deed, and property becomes ours.
Okay, good.
Um, and then I wanted to thank Carolyn, I heard the stump dump was great, I haven't been down there myself yet, but thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mike. Do we, do we need anything on infrastructure, Dave, and we already covered all that stuff, how about the community center?
That's, that's tied to the Community Connect Grant.
Okay, how about E B charging, anything you want on that? Okay, uh, energy grant?
Haven't heard.
Tree grant, Steve
Steve, Steve worked mine, went to a tree class, and, and, and he actually did learn a lot, and they all planted a tree, and all this, and he, he did learn a lot, so, he's working on
And just a, just a thanks to Steve, he, he got the lights up, and you guys got the lights on the gazebo, and it looks really awesome at night, so, that was cool.
I asked Steve about the tree grant last night at planning commission, and one thing, he has some trees planned for the community building, that he's a little concerned with, the project may not be able to go in, so he's gonna be scouting some other locations for those trees.
Okay, good, good. Uh, knotweed?
We have an email.
We got an email from knotweed.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do the Cliff Notes, um, uh, so Alan sent an email to the Select Board for us to kind of go over. Um, he's, he's out of town, so he wanted to just give an update, it looks like he's working, um, on, um, the public space at Memorial Park to, to do the mitigation, um, and he's gonna need, um, it looks like early July, they're gonna cut, and they're gonna, they're gonna mark tape off where they cut and put up signs, and then, um
Treat it.
Treat it in, in late August, so, um, he just asked if we knew of any, um, events planned down there, or anything that may be happening that, that may impact, or if we had any reservations of taping off uh, to accom- of them taping off the area to accommodate for the work.
It's not usable area now anyways, cause the knotweed's there, so I don't think it'd be a problem.
I don't think, I don't, and that doesn't really impact use of the, you know, use of the public space down there either, so I don't think there's any issue with that, so
They doing concerts this summer?
I don't know, we haven't heard.
I don't, I haven't heard, but if, if they do, it'd be at the gazebo, and if, and that's up from where the knotweed is, is kind of, um, you're looking at the park where the sign is, it's down on the side of the bank and along the riverway, so it would be, that would be the area that they're treating, not necessarily the other spaces, but, um, but I don't think there's any issue with that.
No, that sounds good, he also said what Clark's Landing, the stuff they've treated is looking really good and doing really well as far as not coming back and
Uh, yeah, the stuff they've treated up here at the Pancake House too, doesn't come back, it's just, it's gonna be a bare bank there, which is not bad.
Awesome, good work.
Yep.
Uh, okay, good. Uh, open to public and other business?
I've got something, I'll wait and listen to anybody else that's got anything.
Oh, I don't know.
I just had, um, the town yard sale, there wasn't any response, so we hold it.
Okay.
Um, a couple people called me to want to attend it, but I didn't have anybody sign up, so, you know, it didn't happen this year. Um, and the flowers, um, are looking great through, around the building and down through the village, all the barrels are looking great, Red Tea Kettle did a great job.
Okay.
There is one sign, I was telling, I showed Lisa, um, down on the park, it was something spelled wrong, there's no L and an N, um, for the pick-up act, your cleanup act to your pets. So, that sign should be taken down, and another one should be put up.
I've had it for a few years, you know, I always
It says C A S instead of C L E M, D A.
Pets can't read in parts.
So Zach, you did that?
That just says, it doesn't make ground look like, you know, we're educated, so make sure that, please don't grab
Okay, anything else?
Yes, sir.
I'm not from St. John'sburg, so permission to speak?
Okay.
My name's Scott Beck, I'm a, I'm a five-term cost representative and from St. John'sburg, I'm running for, uh, for senate this year, which is the Calum E. District, includes Rotten, which I'm very excited about. I've had a dozen times meeting people, and I look forward to meeting all of you, I'll be available after the meeting if anybody has any questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, so, we have follow-up stuff, I don't know if we wanna get into that tonight, or maybe talk about it at another meeting, town property ordinance stuff, um, overnight camping stuff.
I think we hold that for the next meeting.
Gate, gating the railroad bed discussion. Gate, gating the railroad bed discussion. Do you guys wanna, wanna hold off on that stuff tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so that kind of finishes up. Other than that, setting agenda and your, your stuff.
Yep. I'm gonna, I'll just speak for a minute if that's all right.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to say, and heck of a meeting to have to speak to everybody. So, uh, it, uh, as, as everyone knows, I've, I've been in Grotton, um, since 2012. Been on the Select Board since, what, 2019? I, I was elected literally the week before COVID hit. And, uh, it with, a, a lot of things that have happened in my life in the town of Grotton. Uh, I do hold Grotton very close to, to my heart, um, especially, but, uh, it's, um, it, it's been a desire of mine to, uh, especially, um, since my wife's passing, to, uh, find what's right for the fit for me and my family and my kids. And, um, that's leading me to, uh, move to North Carolina. So, um, I'm, I'm, um, effectively resigning my position on the Select Board, um, as of July 1st, 2024. It's, uh, it's been, um, it's been a challenging couple of years for, for me and my family, and, uh, what makes the most sense for the support of me and my kids is, is, is to move this direction. And, uh, and so I, I just wanted to say to the town of Grotton, thank you. Uh, thank you for, you know, allowing me to be, um, a member of this community. I, I, I just, you know, everybody's been very helpful to me and my family. We're not going forever. We'll be back, um, to visit and see everybody for sure. You know, we, we still have family in the area, so, so it'll be part of why, um, why we'll be back for sure and, and be able to visit, um, Grotton. But, uh, you know, there are a lot of people have, uh, that I've, I've been able to be a part of with, um, with the town, and, um, I'm just proud of the work that we've done in the last, um, five years. And, uh, I'm glad to see that we're actually getting, uh, drainage and, and parking, um, done this year, which is great.
I'll send you pictures.
Oh, yeah. So I'm looking forward to seeing what, seeing how it turns out.
Zach worked so hard on that project.
We, we did a lot of good, good work there and, um, to, to everybody, I, I can't say enough how important it is for people to be a part of our political process. It, um, it's meetings like this, even with passion and, and, and the, um, just everything that people bring to these meetings. It means that people care about our communities, um, and especially this community. It's such a great community that people need to participate. Uh, if I can't say anything else, um, I wish I had started participating in this community before I did, uh, because it's been rewarding to me. Um, I hope it's been rewarding to the town, and I hope that, um, my involvement, um, has helped to move this town in a positive direction, and, and so, um, that's kind of my, my parting words is, we should, we should teach our kids to be a part of this process. We should teach our neighbors to be a part of this process because that's how our country and that's how our, um, our little piece of it is gonna get better. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
And you will be missed. You, you've worked really hard on this board, and you went through one of the hardest times to be on this board, so, and you've been very active in the board and, and, uh, been through a lot, so we're gonna miss you. We're gonna miss you here in Grotton.
Most definitely. Thank you very much.
Are the kids excited?
Yeah, yeah, for the most part. We, once we got over the, okay, we're gonna, we're doing this, really doing this, um, yeah, they're, they're excited, so. And, uh, I think more than anything, they're excited for the adventure and the new opportunity that they're gonna have. And, uh, I think it's gonna make them better people anyway, so, um, it's gonna be good.
Good.
Good luck. And thank you.
So, let's set an agenda for the next meeting, which I guess you won't be with us. But we can get rid of, can we, the hearing for vicious dog is still on there. We don't need that. Open bids for the fire department. Do, I don't think we, we need that on there, probably. Cause we haven't, we haven't got any yet.
So do we wanna leave the ad that says July 10th, or do we wanna move to the August one?
Are we putting the ad out, or no? Isn't the ad out there for July 10th?
It is already, but if I'm gonna do it in three more places.
It probably should be redone for August. Right? The next.
And what's the date for the August meeting?
14th.
14th. 14th.
So do you wanna left on there for the August one or just all?
That's fine. You can leave it on there for the August. That's fine, but not July 10th. Right. What else? Anything else?
I should have.
Select Board member.
Yeah.
Yeah. Appointment of a Select Board member. What else did we need to talk about? We needed to talk about the tax.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. Anything else, Larry? Okay. Okay. Need a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I think I signed everything, so you can send some stuff.